It's now been called to order. At this time, we will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Scott. Please stand.
Father, we thank you today for your goodness, your grace. We thank you for the, just the humbleness that you put in our hearts as you give us the wisdom to do the work tonight, Father. We just ask that you bless each and every person here. We just thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andrew Pott.
Here.
Mr. Ferris.
Here.
Vice President Brain.
Here.
Excuse me. Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Mr. Gillery.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunter was unable to attend. Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. La Tour was also unable to attend. Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. McMillan is not present. Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
And President Kidger.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we have a few housekeeping items. For those of you that have cell phones or pagers, we ask that you would please silence those through the meeting. And if there's anyone that wants to speak on any of the items, they have some blue slips that are in the rear of the room. Please fill those out and bring those to Ms. Jessica here in the front, and she will get those to us. We thank you for that. This time, we will proceed to item number four. Take appropriate action on request by Tyco Dirt Contracting LLC to rezone from agricultural to single-family residential to allow a single-family residential subdivision.
Move to planning and zoning.
At 7,300 Tom A. Bear Road in Ward Three. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item number five. Take appropriate actions on a request by Etronics Workshop LLC to rezone.
Move to planning and zoning.
Single-family residential to light commercial to allow light commercial development in the 400 block of Park Road in Ward One. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, February 21st, and failed to receive a majority vote to recommend that the request be granted.
Move to deny.
I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Ms. Trimmie to deny.
To deny.
To deny.
The rezoning.
He's first said it. You want to talk?
It is, uh...
Could have upheld.
Say it there.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
Hold on, I think you have some speakers.
Okay, we have some speakers on this item.
Evidently. Mr. Brain, do you have a slate?
Did you fill out a blue slip, sir?
I'm the applicant.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
My name is John Gilmore, 605 Hardwood Drive, Moss Bluff, Louisiana, 70611. I am the owner of Etronics Workshop. Been in business since 2001 in Moss Bluff, Louisiana. The lot that I'm trying to rezone, as you can see on the overhead, is a small lot that had been petitioned by previous owner of the property. He separated the property. I'm asking to rezone this property because I want to locate my office on this property to do business. And I thought it wouldn't be a problem because there's already a commercial lot, six tenths of a mile north, convenience store, retail store. And then there's a commercial lot just south of that, my lot. Three tenths of a mile south, there's a veterinarian clinic. My lot faces Park Road. If I walk right across the street, I'd be on Cocksure Parish School Board property. I've got the majority of the people in the neighborhood signature that it's okay. I went to speak to the majority of the people. They signed my petition saying it's okay. They understand what I'm doing. They asked me questions. I explained what I was doing. And I have a copy of that petition. I'd be happy to circulate that to you so that you can see it, the signatures. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have that may not have been asked As a prudent business owner, I wanted to be good neighbors and walk the neighborhood and tell them that they will be seeing a rezoning sign out front and what it was all about and who the owner was and what I was doing and that I've been in business in Moss Bluff since 2001. My business is a repair shop only, appliances and TVs. We do warranty work. Ninety-eight percent of the time, it's inside the customer's house. We have very few customers come into our office. It's all done on the phone. It's all done on the internet. We go to the people's house and we repair their appliance. We just need an office to operate out of that we own. And that's what I'm here for, is to ask that you help me to get this property rezoned so I can build an office. The site plan has been turned in, I think it was on the overhead. It's a 40 by 50 building set off to the side of the property. The house right next door to the property, he signed the petition saying he was all for it. He had no problem with it. And the majority in that little subdivision had no problem with it. So I'm just asking you to take another look at it, if you would, and see if we could get it rezoned. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. We have a few jurors that would like to ask a few questions. You remain at the podium. Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wes, I guess direct to you.
Yes, sir.
I'm reading number five here. What was staff recommendation on this?
Uh, to deny.
To deny?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Andrew Pott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Why was, why deny it?
Yeah, well, nevermind. The reason I recommended to deny is that it's zoned residential right now, single-family residential, and the primary property around there is zoned, single-family residential. There are some properties further south near Sam Houston Jones Road that you do have some commercial property, and he is correct. There is a convenience store, gas station at the corner of Pine Cone, I think, in Meadow. And that has been there for quite some time. That was done, I think, during comprehensive zoning. And so we felt like that opening this up to commercial development and rezoning that was not appropriate.
Okay. Question number two. Able to receive a majority vote. Was there a tie or something?
It was a tie.
How many were there?
Eight.
Eight. Can I address him, Mr. President?
Yes, you may, Ms. Andrew Pott.
What's the closest business next to you and what's the furthest away from you?
The closest one is the convenience store, three tenths of a mile up the road. The furthest one is six tenths of a mile towards 378, which is a veterinarian clinic. And of course, the school board property is right across the street.
Elementary school.
Yeah, the middle school.
Middle school.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Andrew Pott. Mr. Landry.
What is, it looks like it's on a corner. I mean, that's really hard for me to say. I couldn't see it on my copy either.
Yes, sir. It is.
What's the corner?
There's a little private road right there on that corner.
What's the road to the south?
To the south?
It's Lanyap.
Lanyap Lane?
There's a business. There's a business on the corner of Lanyap and that, and Park. He passed away, but that man had a mechanic shop, Norman Eggleston, for like forty years.
Yes, he did.
Now, I don't know how it's zoned.
It's zoned residential.
It might have been illegal, but I mean, it went on for a long time.
I can't answer that question, but the property is zoned, single-family residential.
Now, of course, the school is zoned.
Single-family residential.
The school property?
Yes, sir.
Well, how did the school board build a school on R1?
It allowed for schools to be located in single-family.
I think that's all I've got for now.
Okay, Mr. Landry.
But I might come back to you.
I'll be waiting for you. Mr. White.
To clear that, as far as the commercial property on this road, the closest spot is a gas station, which is further north from the location that he's asking for, which is at the corner of an intersection that isn't right across the street from the school. With the congested traffic that we already have on Park Road due to the middle school traffic pickup for school, I know he addressed the issues of having business hours that would rotate around the school pickup lines, but yet again, I go back to the fact, every piece of property other than the gas station that's on the corner, four-way stop, and main corridor of Moss Bluff, which is 378, is the only other commercial piece of property. All the rest of the area is R1. And to set a precedence of turning rezoning this to a commercial piece of property is something I can't support. Not in the mix of R1, single-family residence. So, I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Gillery.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that side road, would your trucks be going into the building on the side road or...?
I don't have any trucks, sir.
Well, I thought you was going to service the TVs or appliances, whatever.
I have one service van.
So is it going to be parked on, going on the side or in the front, as far as the traffic going through the school?
Well, he shows up around 12 o'clock to pick up parts, and then he goes back out to work on appliances.
Okay. All right.
I don't have any, I don't have any traffic. If a customer wants to bring something in, they call and they make an appointment, they bring it in, we accept it. But the majority of our work is warranty work. We're a service provider for stores that don't have their own service department. And we get calls, referrals from these manufacturers by telephone, or they dispatch it through means of the internet. Most of the time, it's a family business, so most of the time, when my wife's in the office, the door's locked. She's the only one there, and she opens at nine. We've been doing that since 2001. We don't plan on changing our business structure. We just want an office of our own.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Back to you, Mr. Landry.
So do you currently own the property?
I do.
So you've owned it for some time?
Yes, sir. I bought it about six or seven years ago.
What was your intent?
To do this, just this.
Okay. But you bought it, and I'm sure at the time, you knew it was R1.
I did buy it under residential. The man that sold it to me, I asked him about that. Of course, it was residential, and I told him what I wanted to buy it for. Of course, it was no concern of his.
Right.
But I bought it for that reason, because in a visionary way, I knew that it was just going to get more populated and more busier in the Moss Bluff area. In fact, the traffic will probably pick up, not because of me, but because Pine Cone going out to 171, that's going to drive some traffic. And I don't know what y'all...
Yeah. And you know, it's a...
What y'all have.
You ever heard of buyer beware? Most of the time on something like that, you would want the sale to be contingent upon you getting your zoning, so you really should have done it on the front side.
Well...
I mean, unfortunately, now, was there any opposition there the other night? I mean, because there's none here, there's no slips filled out.
There was a speaker.
So there was one person that showed up that was against it.
Is there anyone that's in the audience that would like to speak on this matter that's here tonight that didn't fill out a blue slip? Is there anyone?
There was one resident from the neighborhood spoke on Tuesday.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. White, back to you, I'm sorry.
I have had many a phone calls on this issue with rezoning to, out of R1, to make it a commercial piece of property. So there was phone calls that was made to me to deny this request. So that's how I based my decision, on the top of it being still R1 and nothing around it being commercial.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any other...
How many names? Thank you, Mr. President. How many names on the petition not opposing this project?
Help me out, vice. Seven.
And we don't have a petition of anybody signing saying they were against it, right? And these people, Madam President?
Go ahead, Ms. Andrew Pott.
These people are in the proximity where you want to build this building?
Yes, sir. That street is a dead-end street, it's a cul-de-sac, and there's ten houses.
And these people sign...
And those people, yes, sir. I knocked on every door.
I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Pott. Are there any other jurors that would like to speak on this matter? At this time, I guess we will proceed to roll call. Madam Secretary?
I need to know how we voting here and where we voting.
The motion on the floor is to deny the rezoning request.
So yes is with him and a no is against him.
Yes is to deny and no is to deny. This will be a reverse roll call vote.
No is to deny. Mr. White? Yes.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Scott is yes.
Yes is to deny.
Would you repeat that one more time, Ms. Kathy?
The motion on the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is to deny the rezoning request. So a yes vote would be to deny.
Yes means no.
Yes means no. Okay. We ended with Mr. Scott, so Ms. Mayo?
No.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Yes is to deny. Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
And Mr. Andrew Pott? There were seven yays and four nays. The motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Moving on to item number six. Take appropriate action on request by Entrata Company LLC to rezone from central business commercial to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park in the 2,800 block of Delta Downs in Ward...
Move to overturn planning and zoning?
The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Barris to overturn, and I have a second by Ms. Trimmie. We have a few speakers on this item.
Wait a minute. Yeah, I do want to...
This is for the applicant. We ask that Mr. Bob Holland, please come forth. Please state your name and address for the record, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. It wasn't voted unanimously. That's what it says. It's wrong. It wasn't. Good evening. My name is Bob Holland. I live at 5865 Lemongrass Circle West, Lake Charles, Louisiana, and I'm here representing Marsha Norman, who is involved in the ownership of Entrata, who is making the request. And I'd like to begin by stating that I am a real estate broker, and I have been a Realtor for over 30 years. It's how I make my living. It's how I support my family, and I have the utmost respect for homeownership and homeowners. So when Laura Byrd, who is an associate with C-21 Bono, which is the same company that I have my license with, asked me to assist her and Marsha Norman with kind of pulling this effort together, I said I'd take a look at it and, you know, I always ask myself, does this project have merit and is it a worthy project? So the first thing I did is I sat down and I met with Laura and Marsha and reviewed their submittals and their plans for the project. And it's really a substantial project. It's a couple of million dollar project. It has really amazed me. It has concrete streets, pads and parking, a lot of amenities. It's adjacent and butts up to property owned by Delta Downs. So, you know, on the first thing that I did, I really felt like it was substantial, and from that process, from that point of view, did have merit. I then drove out to the potential development site, and I spent a lot of time out there looking around and driving around back and forth and that sort of thing. And, you know, it looked like a commercial area. You know, there was a convenience store on the corner, and then, of course, Delta Downs is just, you know, it's an immense asset in our parish, and it's certainly commercial, but, you know, you don't know till you ask. So, you know, my next step, but I thought it had merit just based on its location and what I perceived the zoning might be, which I thought was probably some kind of commercial zoning. My next stop was I went by and visited with the parish planning officials, Marsha, and I learned that, you know, that entire area is zoned, commercial C3. The property is zoned, commercial C3. And all the property around it is zoned, commercial C3. I think the property adjacent to and immediately west of this site is zoned, commercial C3. And so, you know, that really made a pretty good impact on me because there were, you know, this is a commercial project with at least somewhat of a residential use, and it occurred to me that there will be other projects that could be built there by right that would be much more intrusive to any neighbors and any single-family residences in the area. And so, you know, I also learned after visiting with Marsha that the staff, the parish staff had recommended it. That certainly made an impact on me. And then Tuesday night, the board, the zoning board voted, and they were unanimous, eight to zero in favor. That made an impact on me. And then I looked at the tax rolls, and I think if I'm not mistaken, it's currently been taxed, just 13 acres, the taxes were $56.94 a year. And I certainly believe that those taxes are going to increase substantially. I think this, oh, I think this is going to be a benefit to the parish, a benefit to Vinton, the Vinton area. And I have to tell you, I agree with the parish planning office and the zoning board last night. I think this project has merit and is worthy, and I would ask you to vote in favor of this. And at this time, I'd like to turn over the ownership's lead representative, Marsha Norman.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Marsha, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I would. My name is Marsha Norman.
Marsha, did we get a blue slip from you, ma'am?
Well, I'm the applicant, so you still want a blue slip?
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. My address is 2514 Gladys Street, Beaumont, Texas, Jefferson County. I'm here to answer any questions you have. This project was conceived, certainly not on a whim. I'm a Texas resident who has frequented Delta Downs and that area. I'm familiar with the area. This property that I've put a contract in on has been for sale for quite some time. When I called about the property, I was surprised at the price. I was surprised at the zoning, that it was zoned, commercial, and so I put a contract in to buy the property. I'm a baby boomer RV'er. There's only about 1,400 RV parks in North America in total. I have a pretty big classic airstream motorhome, so I'm interested in this for a very good reason. Baby boomers and RVing are coming online in massive numbers. In 2017 alone, they expect a 40% increase in the amount of motorhomes that they're going to sell. And in this area, there's not really a luxury RV park that can accommodate some of the larger motorhomes. If you have a 36-foot to a 42-foot, you have nowhere to stop. There's nowhere to pull in and take a break. Cachada has an RV park at their casino. It's a really nice RV park. It's to the back of the casino. It's cement roads with water features, and I'd like to put a luxury RV park next to Delta Downs. I discovered that this property butts up to the back of Delta Downs. I feel quite sure that they'll agree with me, that it's to their benefit, and they will assist us with putting in a road straight to the casino parking lot. When I looked at the property, I've developed property before, so I'm mindful of the area around the property. There's approximately four residents that's right close to the property. Some of them live in manufactured housing, some of them have other types of homes. But I think it was you, Mr. Landry, that told the other gentleman, you should have done your homework before you bought the property. So I'm doing my homework before I buy this property. It's zoned, commercial. If I can turn it into an RV park, I'll buy the property. If I can't, I probably won't. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. We have one more speaker, and we'll come back to those questions in a minute. At this time, I would ask that Mr. Mike Bono, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mike DiBono, Century 21 Mike DiBono and Company, Lake Charles. I know most of you people, and I'm not going to hold you up very long. I just have more of a message and a couple of comments, and this has to do more with not just the police jury, the city council, not just about the city or the parish, but I think basically it has to do with our area of Cameron Parish, Cocksure Parish, and so forth and so on. I've been around a long time, and I know a lot of you guys have been around with me in business, and I think a lot of Lake Charles, and I'm interested in the future. I don't know if I have this number right, but somewhere I heard that we have over $48 million in projected projects that are going to be in Cocksure Parish.
Billion.
Billion. Well, you see, I can't count past 100, so...
I can't either, but I'm...
But I don't know. A billion from a million, okay? It's a lot of money any way you cut it up. And my message, I guess, basically is, of course, I'm in favor of this project because I think it's a no-brainer personally to me. I understand there's opposition, there always is. But my message is this. All of you that have been around here for a while, who've seen our communities mess up, and I'm going to use the phrase, kill the goose that laid the golden egg. You know, one time we had in Pioneer Building, the majority of the oil business, the state of Louisiana, pardon me, yeah, most of it in the Lake Charles, Cocksure Parish, we had all the oil business that was going around here, southwest Louisiana. We lost that over greed. I was here. I know what happened. So we lost the oil center, and we did, well, we lost a huge project because our tax rolls and everything else. You know, anytime, I hate to talk about the rich folks, but anytime you take the Lake Charles Golf and Country Club, and they almost go broke because of all the members that they lost over that thing, and then the Pioneer Building, you know, that... Uh, and then the Pioneer Building, you know, that went vacant. Uh, homes were on the market, dentists and doctors had a downside in, in their patients. Uh, that's, that's, that's a lot of things. Now, I only bring that up, that one project that hurt us. But we got a reputation. I don't want to be preaching to the choir because you guys already know this. We got a reputation for being negative to projects coming into the area, good, bad or indifferent. And I'm not saying they are all a good, you're not going to pass all of them. And, and they're not all good. But all I'm asking is, if that's not my message or my con, my comments or, is you, you people have been elected, you're smart and I wish that you would just use your, your own good talents to make the decisions on how you are going to lead this community in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. I have a few comments by some of my jurors. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I just got some questions, general question, I guess, uh, please. Thanks. That, that back entrance, I see that, that, I'm guessing you, you guys are joined, uh, or you're adjacent to Delta Downs property?
That's correct.
On the west side, east side? That's right?
East, west side is on the back side. That's the best I can tell you right now.
Oh, I got you, okay. Yeah, that'd be the back of your park.
It's at the very back corner where the Delta Downs road starts.
Now, when you, when you, I see in your other drawing there, there's a little, you're talking about a road possibly or a court path type thing. You know, I, I, you know, in the front there, you got the security guard, they can monitor the comings and goings of people. But what, what would be monitoring that? You know, the.
If I can answer that, there's also, because these drawings are so small, engineers do this sort of thing. There's a little building right there in the center. Because in that back area where you see those six spaces, what we plan to do in that back area is to put vintage airstreams that you can rent, like a hotel room, but you get the experience of staying in a vintage airstream. So there'll be a building there that has access for security or whatever the problems may be. But when you come and rent one of those vintage airstreams that we will be restoring ourselves, they'll have a price tag in them and if you like them, you can drive off with it. And we'll put another one there when you're gone. So we wanted to have some unique features so that we can attract some classic, uh, vintage trailer crowds and vintage car crowds. So those are the kind of baby boomers and people we're looking to attract. People with $2 million motorhomes and vintage motorhomes and vintage cars.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, that, that was a question I, I didn't expect to have. So this is basically like an RV lot, like sales?
No, sir.
It can be.
Well, you can buy a vintage airstream if you'd like, but you don't have to buy it. It's a hotel room on wheels, basically.
Okay, I, um, and, uh, security, you're going to have, is it 24?
24-hour management on site and 24-hour security on site, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and hang, hang there, um.
I'm not leaving.
Mr. Wayne Wright, I guess would catch this one. What is, is that, was it zoned floodwise? Oh, I, I can, that's, it's, it's in the X-zone, it's on X. Okay, right. Uh, and then, so that's good. Now, on your main entrance, those are big, those are some big pushers you're, you're going to be bringing in there. Is that enough frontage? And is that, is that opening big enough for those of, I mean?
We have about the size, uh, about half the size of a football field for the frontage road. I forget the exact number off the top of my head. It's 200 plus feet, almost 300 feet. So yes, sir, we have plenty of room.
I'm good for right now, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Andrew Font?
Mr. President, I'd like to wait till I hear the other side as well, if that's all right with you, sir.
Mr. Bono?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm looking at, uh, at a plot plan. And then on the next page, I'm looking at a kind of an overlay. Those don't match. Which one is it?
I can answer that for you. The plot plan that you see on the front is the one that's viable here. When we first did the overlay, we had approximately 114 lots. And there's a pipeline. So we've met with the pipeline companies. They came out and marked where the pipelines were. They've told us what type of road we have to put across that pipeline. So we eliminated the spaces that we would need to eliminate to accommodate that pipeline. So instead of more spaces, I think we're down to about 97 spaces.
Okay, so is it, uh, the plot plan that's the real McCoy? Or is it the overlay picture that we see over the trees?
It's the plot plan that's the real McCoy. I gave you the overlay so you could get a feel of where Delta Downs was. And the plot plan was what was submitted with our application.
So in the, in the plot plan that we have, it pushes the, uh, the entryway further away from the residence.
That is correct.
Correct. And then that, in that new, in the plot plan, it doesn't show, there's a whole lot of parking spaces in this other one. And, and on the new plot plan, there's no additional parking spaces. It looks like one of them shows, I don't know, maybe 100 cars that they could park that aren't at a RV spot.
Well, here's what happens in Louisiana that we've discovered. Every RV space has to have parking for at least two vehicles. So again, we lost more spaces by redrawing that to accommodate the two vehicles. And on the other side, where the airstream park is located and up towards the front where the office is, you probably can't see the small markings there, but there's additional parking at the front. There's some additional parking spaces at the back by the airstream location. And there will also be some additional parking by the shower and laundry area. So we redrew the plans after we met with the pipeline company, but there'll be additional parking spaces there, but there certainly won't be 100.
That's, uh, that's basically just so that the folks maybe if wanting to go do laundry or something, they can drive over to it, park, do their laundry and then go back to their, to their RV spot. I guess one of the questions was, was each one of these places has two, uh, parking spots.
That's a Louisiana requirement.
By law that they have to have that.
It's under parish ordinance, dude.
What about a buffer zone? Is there, is there a fence? I can't read the fine print on this thing. Is there a fence around this place or?
Again, according to your ordinance, we have to put a buffer zone in. And we prefer to do a natural buffer zone. And I believe your requirements are that the plants or trees be at least four feet and planted every three feet. So that's what we intend to do.
Another thing that we, and I'm going to make this in the form of a motion when the time comes, is, uh, is that we restrict, mobile homes from this RV park. Because then according to our ordinance, you are allowed to have a mobile home in an RV park, but you're not allowed to have an RV in a mobile home park. So, um, I'm going to put that as an additional stip, a motion for additional stipulation. And I, and I spoke with, uh, Ms. Byrd about this on the phone the other day, if y'all had a problem with that. Since it's, the intent is purely for RVs here, we don't want this thing to turn into another situation that we currently have in the parish and, uh, and, and restrict this parks all the way to RVs instead of allowing mobile homes in this. Do you have, do you have any issue with that?
The only issue that I might have, and let me say I don't have an issue with mobile homes being there. I don't want to own a mobile home park, first of all. Secondly, the only issue that I would have and, and to eliminate from the stipulation is people that travel with tiny homes. Because now that's all the rage. They have a tiny home, it's on wheels. When they travel, they want to stay at an RV park because that's where you park them. But they're not there permanently. They're there just like an RV, but it's.
I'm going to refer this one back over to, uh, Mr. Crane. And, uh, are those type of homes that don't have an RV stamp on them allowed to park themselves in, in either a mobile home or an RV park? Because the mobile home park has to be a HUD-approved unit. And RV has to be an RV stamped unit, right?
That is my understanding, um, that, uh, which we had an issue previously with an RV park where they did have a unit in there that was considered a, a, uh, RV model, park model type unit. I'm not familiar with the tiny home type structures. I don't know what they're built to. Uh, but, but according to when we, uh, had met with the state fire marshal, um, there was an issue with that. So, uh, we probably need to get with Ms. Marcia and, and kind of figure some of that out.
It may be excluded just by the nature of the business.
Correct. And I think we can probably work that out and, 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 and talk to Ms. Marcia about that, about what actually would be allowed in here under state Louisiana, state Louisiana.
Yeah, and, and when I was with the mobile home, if it's not a HUD-stamped unit, which these tiny homes are probably not HUD-stamped units, then they wouldn't be able to fit into a mobile home situation anyway. So I want to put that as a form of a motion that we exclude mobile homes from this park, um, altogether and purely stipulate that only RVs can park in this. And if I could get a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, with that stipulation to be added.
Okay, so are we including tiny homes in that? Are we going to do further research on that?
Pardon of the state fire marshal.
According to the state and fire marshal.
Your motion on the floor is to deny.
I'm, I want to add a stipulation to the mo.
But the motion is to deny, not accept. If the motion to deny doesn't pass, then we can add this.
I, I, I get where you're going.
Good.
I do have, I do have a, a couple more. Talking about the RVs that you want to rent, do we allow that? Or, I mean, we've been through that already with, uh, people renting RVs and the state fire marshal had a big problem with that. Is that something we need to do anything about? Or does the fire marshal end up, at the end of the day, making that ruling? Because we've had an issue with, with our, just a standard RV being a piece of rental property. They don't, it falls under a piece of commercial activity then. And they have to be sprinkled in all sorts of other stipulations put on it. So that may be something that just ends up at the end of the day, taking care of itself. Is that correct?
Mr. Farmer, I, I believe you're right. And, and again, uh, when I heard that, I thought the same thing because we, we did run into an issue again with, when we dealt with this particular issue that you're referring to, uh, with the fire marshal. And, um, because there's some state law that, that refers back to renting or rental units for RVs. And so we, we need to, we need to probably look into that before they act on putting that in here.
Okay. And I guess in a, there, there, there could or could not be a, a traffic impact analysis that's triggered from this activity, either by the jury or by the state. Just depends on who, who sees it as an issue that maybe turn lanes have to be developed. Just want to make sure you're aware of, of what could come out of a, of a traffic impact analysis. It could or couldn't even be implemented on this, don't know.
Well, this is, obviously this is on a state Louisiana highway. And, um, the, the, you know, they would have to go through the state in order to get access. And the state is going to probably look at access control and, and determine whether a traffic impact analysis is going to be required. But that is a state-controlled, uh, access point.
The only other thing I could make, just a comment, is if you would consider removing the rental units from the front end of that property. There's only five, five spots.
Those are not at the front end, they're at the back end, sir.
That's the road, I'm, I'm talking about on the road access end of it.
Right.
Where you first access the property. That seems to be the closest proximity to a house. Everything else would be on the other side of, of the pipeline.
Well.
And there's only five units there.
But here's why I won't consider doing that. Those five spaces are to accommodate the larger luxury RVs. That because of the way they're building them now, the slide outs take up more room. And so we've done the best design that we could come up with to accommodate the larger luxury RVs, which are the clients we're trying to attract. So if they can't open their slide out, they're not going to come park in my space.
Okay, fair enough. What's the longest length of time somebody can stay in an RV park?
180 days.
180 days.
I'm sorry. I need to look at that. Might be 120.
I hope it's significantly different than that. Uh, okay, I, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any other jurors that would like to come in? Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, Mr. Landry?
I got one comment. We, I, I know there's a lot of concerns, but I think we just need to remember we're voting on the land, uh, land use. This is a land use issue. A lot of those other details, uh, Wes's staff will, will work out and the state fire marshal is going to work out. I mean, it's all about, is this a good use for the property? That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
The point clarify. Okay, 180 days.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I have a Mister Teddy McNeil, who's in opposition of the applicant. Please come forth, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Is it just one opposition?
Uh, yes. Ms. Jessica, can you?
Oh, he's already got somebody else. Is that someone else? Is there, uh, is that another?
Yes, that, yes. Legal counsel, how much time are we giving?
Uh, the proponent, he said about 12 minutes. Give him the same. About six minutes apiece for the two opposites.
We do have another person that's speaking. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, my name is, excuse me, I'm kind of getting the horse. My name is Teddy McNeil. I live at 2845 Delta Downs Drive in Vinton, Louisiana, 70668. I am an old Marine and I'm not a realtor, excuse me, and I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a good old boy. I would like to thank you for giving me the, the opportunity to, to the police jury to express our opposition to rezoning of the property from commercial to recreation vehicle park. I live right, the border of property line borders our property line. My first concern is the safety of the residents that's in close proximity of the RV park. Several of them are elderly. One is directly across the street. His grandkids, grandkids, including myself. Their concern is criminal activity and traffic. Giving out driveways is a hassle for them, that already. There is, there is one family that is caring for a disabled wife and mother that was caused by accident on Delta Downs Drive. There is also several residents, including myself, with expensive horses and animals, excuse me, right adjacent to this property. Traffic is a big concern. We already live with Mick, with heavy traffic due to Delta Downs and casino and racetrack. I have a report, I've handed out from Louisiana DOT, it's called a crash list that has crash statistics from past three years with eight fatalities and 130 total accidents. To me, that's entirely too much. To me, that's entirely too much. Why add to the traffic? It's just going to make it more dangerous. I can't see that. There will also be no turning lane to enter the RV park. I've done in the past escort service for oversized loads. And if you have anything over fifty foot or forty foot even, you have to go into the opposite lane to make that turn, which creates a bad situation. You have to have somebody stop the traffic to the right so they won't come in while he's making the turn. There will also be, with, I'm sorry, thirty or forty foot RV causing more noise and mites at all hours of the day and night. That will be less, excuse me, my throat is killing me, than a hundred foot from our bedroom windows and directly across the street from the elderly. The plans from the applicant are unrealistic due to three pipelines that run through the proposed property and also two drainage canals and wet, and it is a wet. Thank you very much. There is also not enough areas for a hundred and fourteen RV spaces in other plans for We are also concerned about who will be allowed in this RV park. Surely, it won't be just retirees. There will have to be some migrant workers with no restrictions of how long they can stay. There is also five other RV parks in the immediate area, K O A, Prince RV Park, Smoker Paradise RV Park, Pelican Park, and Niblets Bluff Park. There is no need for another RV park in this area. This neighborhood that has been here for many generations under peaceful conditions will be burdened with noise, light, and traffic and transient people. We also have a petition of over two hundred signatures that oppose this rezoning. I want to thank y'all for listening to our opposition and God bless every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. If you would stay there, we do have a juror that has a comment. Mr. Andrew Point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to address Mr. Crane first.
Yes, sir.
Give me a, for instance, what a person could put with the C3 zoning presently exist.
C3, central business commercial allows for a multitude of commercial type uses. They could be shopping centers, you know, Walmarts, grocery stores, hotels. There's a multitude of things.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I'd like to ask the lady, the applicant, to come to the microphone if I could, please, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for an excellent presentation. I was really impressed with your, your knowledge of the business that you're trying to promote here. As I appreciate it, if I understood you correctly, you're more interested in RV, when we say RVs, you're talking about the motor homes and all side of things. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you've done this before, I presume, because you seem to have a lot of knowledge in the, in that area?
I've done other home developments before. This will be my first RV park and I hope my best.
And maybe your last?
No, I hope it's not my last, Lake Tahoe's my next stop.
Okay, you can take a seat. I just wanted to ask you those questions.
Yes, sir.
We do have another speaker.
If I, I'm not done. Do I have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. I listen to both sides. And you know, if ants and bush were candy and nuts, we'd all have a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Francis, let me, let me, let me just stop you there because, okay, but do you know that we have another speaker?
I did not know that.
Yes, that's why I wanted to stop you.
I thought you said it was only one.
No, we had another one that came up.
Will you accept my apology, sir?
No, I just say, you're not going to look out for you, Ms. Andrew Point.
All right.
At this time, would Ms. Cynthia Granger, please come forth, state your name and address for the record, ma'am. We're good, Ms. Andrew Point.
My name is Cynthia Granger. I live at 2859 Highway 3063, which is also Delta Downs Drive. I apologize for not being more prepared. I didn't plan to do this, but I see a huge need. This was rezoned in 1972 during the construction of the racetrack. This is only zoned, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers, whatever the zone is called, on the south side of Delta Downs Drive or 3063. The other side is still zoned residential. Am I correct?
No, ma'am. Both sides are zoned C3.
Both sides?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Be that as it may, we have, other than the store at the corner, which faces 109, it does not face 3063. And there was a store across the street on the other corner that was there from the mid 1940s, which I don't remember, but it was. And then the racetrack. The racetrack requested this rezoning and they've never moved past their original corner post they put up when they developed Delta Downs. None of us has been approached about anybody being interested in the properties until now. And we have a lot of elderly people. This is all residential from Delta Downs to the store at the corner. One thing that I do want to mention, this is about my neighborhood, but I do want to say, it's not correct that none of these other RV parks can accommodate a trailer over thirty-five feet long. I have a little part-time job since I retired at Niblets Bluff Park. This is not a promotion for the park in any way, but we do accommodate trailers far longer than that. And we do allow a few long-term campers. We do not allow, I think fourteen days is the maximum stay for someone camping. I can only be concerned that some of these permanent RVs could possibly end up being We have a lot of issues with security. There's a big difference in a security guard who might be deputized and may not be. I don't know what level of security they're talking about. You know, somebody running around in a little cushman once an hour making around is different than somebody on foot patrol that may be armed. I don't know, I'm not plugging for either of that. I'm just saying it's not been made very clear. I have a lot of concerns that, I know what we've heard tonight's not the same, but Monday night we heard that, or Tuesday night, I'm sorry. Ms. Marcia said that, you know, a lot of these people, grandparents, parents will be bringing their children and at night they'll put them to bed and then they're going to take a golf cart trail over to the racetrack to, to enjoy an evening out. Who's going to watch these kids? How do we know there's going to be supervision for any of this? You know, what we're hearing is one thing, but what's going to be happening might not be in effect. And I have a lot of concerns. We've had a very peaceful neighborhood. I've lived out there since 1958 and we've never had an issue. And I just really hate to see us invite one. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Granger. We do have some comments by the juror. Back to you, Ms. Andrew Point.
Thank you. Wes, if I, as I appreciate it, this is basically a down zoning from what it is down to what she's asking to be rezoned to, basically about the same thing.
Well, you know, the police jury passed an ordinance that specifically designates if you want to do an RV park, you have to designate it as an RV park. And so, there's, you know, certain uses that are allowed in RV parks once you do that. So, there are certain uses that are allowed in C3 that may not be allowed in the RV park if it's rezoned.
But if I own that property and want to put them all on it right now, I could come to go through the process and could do that.
Uh, it would, it would require, obviously, make an application for a permit, you know, and go, going through that.
I'm trying to put everything in perspective.
Yes, sir.
Is what I'm trying to do. Okay, that all being said, you know, I've been here a long time and I've heard a lot of oppositions to a lot of different projects, going back so far as people opposed to Delta Downs and of course, it exists now and you don't hear anybody talk about it anymore. We had a room full of people one night where they were opposing the expansion of industry when Westlake Chemical wanted to put another industry out there. So, the antis are going to always be here, they're always going to exist, and some are right and some are wrong and some are indifferent. That all being said, every time we vote no on a project, we impede growth in Cockshoe Parish. And Mr. Bono was right in what he said a while ago. There seems to be a mindset of I don't want to be inconvenienced, where we're all inconvenienced. I don't care where you live. I live in Sulphur and I'm telling you, I can't get anywhere anymore with the traffic. But we have to accept that in light of the fact that we are growing here. We have somewhere around forty-five billion dollars on the books as we speak with another, probably another forty billion dollars anticipated coming in the future. We have to think future, we can't think present. And I know that, and I respect these people who are anti, are not, won't let RV park there. But I can assure you, if I owned a two million dollar motor home, I don't think I'm going to be a threat to society, you know? I'm just using that as an example and she used the term two million, that's where I got that from a few minutes ago. So, before we cast a vote here tonight, people, think hard on what you're voting for or against, you know? Maybe the political thing to do is to vote no. But the real issue is, we need it. If you've traveled Interstate 10 going east lately, you'll notice that Jeff Davis Parish, the RV park there is filling up by the day. Every time we bring somebody into Cockshoe Parish, the tax base improves and increases. I just ask that you think hard before you cast your vote. And I yield back, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Point. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. One issue that was brought up, Mr. Crane, is about the traffic situation. Of course, now that's on a state road, so it's going to require a traffic impact study, correct?
Well, the state, the state controls that. So, they have the, if it triggers their, if it triggers their traffic impact analysis, then yes, they would have.
And do you think it's going to trigger it?
Mr. Landry, I don't know.
Not sure. If it does, I know that the state will address that turning lane issue. I mean, because they're going to know what project they're looking at, that then they're going to know that RVs are turning in there.
Sure.
And if the study points in that direction that that would be needed for safety reasons, I know the state is going to require that. And let's face it, we all know the state isn't going to pay for it. The developer's going to have to pay for it to be part of the project. Is that correct?
Well, the state of Louisiana has traffic engineers and I'm sure they're going to look at this, you know, and they'll determine what the requirements will be. Yes.
And if they determine they need a turn lane, the developer's going to pay for it.
That's a state issue, so.
Well, I just saw on TV that last little special session they had and I don't think they have any extra money for a turn lane for the RV park in Benton. So, I'm pretty sure they'll push that off on the developer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Crane, are these the same crackerjack engineers who let a nine-hundred-and-fifty car parking ride happen for nine months? They, they missed that one, so.
It was illegal.
Well, I know, but they just, it never happened, I mean, they never caught it. So, I mean, we're, so you're saying we're relying on that?
It's a state-controlled highway. I yield back, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. At this time, we had a vote by the Planning and Zoning Board on February 21st, 2017, unanimously to grant the applicant. And we had a motion by Mr. Barris to overturn and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Ms. Kathy, at this time, would we be in order to have a roll call vote?
Yes, sir, if there's no more discussion.
Is there any more discussion? Ain't none, Ms. Kathy.
Okay. The motion on the floor, as Mr. Preston Guidry stated, is to overturn the Planning and Zoning Board and to deny the request to rezon. So, a yes vote means no. A yes vote means to deny. And this will be starting with the A's this time, Ms. Andrew Point.
No.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
No.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Landry?
No.
Ms. Mayo?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. Trimmie?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
No.
The motion failed, so.
Moved up whole with.
Stipulations, Mr.
We'll just make it part of the motion. Go ahead, Mr. Farnum.
Go ahead, Mr. Farnum.
I'd like to add a stipulation that this park be restricted to RVs only.
We'll make that as part of my motion, then it'll just be so much simpler.
I have a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Brain.
If that's okay with you.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Farnum?
Okay.
We're good. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carry.
Well, we probably want to do a roll call on that one as well.
Do we need a roll call vote on that?
Yes, please.
Secretary, Ms. Kathy? We're going to need a roll call vote on that stipulation.
Yes, sir, this will be a reverse.
On the entire motion?
Yes.
With the stipulation.
With the stipulation.
The added stipulation.
Thank you for adding that, Mr. Landry.
And this will be a reverse roll call vote. Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Trimmie?
No.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
And Ms. Andrew Point?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number seven. Take appropriate actions on a request by Phillips All Company LLC to.
Second. Kevin, let him clear.
Okay. To rezon from general commercial to heavy industrial to allow heavy industrial development at 5840 Common Street in Ward 3. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, voted unanimously to recommend that the request be denied. I have, I have a motion to discuss from Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Landry.
I just wanted to hear from the applicant and Mr. Brain before we made a motion.
Okay. At this time, we will hear from Mr. Todd Gasport. Please state your name and address for the record, sir, please.
Todd Gasport, 507 Contour, Lake Charles, 70665. I'm submitting an application to move some tanks in on the property that Billy owns. Right now, we have our main facility's in Sulphur. That's where our business is at, that's where we operate at. But with the traffic going on and with the work coming on the interstates, we cannot move our fuel trucks from one side of the bridge to the other side of the bridge. Right now, a fuel truck usually makes four to five loads a day, but when there's traffic on the interstates, we're shut down to making one load a day. We operate, we've been having this property for thirty years. We're not looking to dig in or make a big facility there. We want to pour slab forty by sixty. We want to bring in frat tanks, home wheels, set them on the slab, build a containment wall, put a roof over it to service our bobtail trucks when we cannot access back the interstate to get back to the refineries to fill our trucks up. So, we're not really trying to increase our business. We're trying to service the business we have now until they finish working on the interstates. And I don't, I wouldn't really, didn't know how to approach the project. I didn't realize it was going to get to this. If, even if we can do a ten-year, I don't know if they're going to allow that, short term, to change the zoning, we're not looking for long-term operating off this facility. The property's more valuable than us putting three tanks on it to service our trucks. There's one person that opposed it the other night at the meeting. at the meeting. Uh, I think the only question they really had is, would it lighten hit the tanks? And that was, right now, there's the fabrication shops, there's most of the business around there all closed down. If you have any questions or...
Yes, we do, Mr. Gasport.
I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Our first one is Mr. Scott.
Mr. Gasport, you gonna put a, an office there, anything like that? It's gonna be unmanned. It will have security cameras and alarm systems. No, only thing it'll be there, a truck will go there and fill up the bobtails forty-five hundred gallons of fuel to make the deliveries. They like to, our transport trucks, which hauls ninety-two hundred gallons, will probably roll in, like at nighttime, to fill up the tanks. And this is to service the smaller bobtail trucks during the daytime. What about the actual security of the site? How tall a fence? Because I know they've got kids running everywhere around that one, so... Right now, there's a six-foot fence with barbed wire around it. Uh, we, but in our deals, we'll have the gates, six-foot fence, barbed wire. Uh, from the zoning or planning, I think they commented, they wanted landscaping boards, and they want me to hide the tanks, which I had no problem either. We was putting a roof on it, so we'd have to deal with the rainwater. Uh, I mean, I can put the wooden fence, I can close it in the building. You don't even have to see the tanks. We start, your other facilities on Swissco Road, correct? Correct. This facility's gonna be on Gulf Highway, which is unincorporated area, which means July fourth and holidays, they, fireworks going crazy around that place. What are you doing? And how is, how safe is this site when it comes, because I know you drive on that road, and they're standing on the side of the road throwing fireworks. So, how safe is that site against something like that? All this comes under DQ and EPA Fire Marshal. Uh, overscale planning, um, they're all vented, pressure vented. It's not like, I, I best way I can explain it, it's more safer than a car at a gas station filling it up. They, they, when they get fuel, the fumes are back into the tank. So, they're not really releasing any fumes on-site. Uh, it's like a dual recovery system when they transport their fuel from the tank to the trucks. So, you have a, a full-size eighteen-wheeler fill in the tanks, and then you have smaller trucks emptying the tanks is what's gonna happen? Yes, our, what we'd like to see is the eighteen-wheeler's going in, filling them up at nighttime. Um, I mean, as long as nothing's wrong with the roads, the facility's not gonna be operating. It's basically, it's gonna be for standby. Uh, then we're more, if, if, when we pulling out of here, it's not to, you're basically delivering the fuel twice. You're paying once to get it there, then paying to haul it to the customer. But at the same time, if we can't get the fuel to the customer, we're not getting no fuel. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Crane, can you kind of give me a brief why we, just because of the zoning, is that the main concern?
That, that's really, uh, the primary, um, issue is that, you know, the current zoning is C-two along that corridor right there. This is a heavy industrial type use, and so we would be rezoning this to heavy industrial to allow for that type of use. So, that, that's really the primary issue. Obviously, Common Street at this location. Uh, we've looked at this before, you know, of having corridor standards and things like that. Uh, I sort of had that in mind. Um, and, and just, you know, making sure that we're being consistent with the types of uses along this particular corridor.
Mr. Gasport, I think we could have some more discussion on this, just to make sure if it could or couldn't happen. If we were to defer, would you be willing to defer for thirty days just to have a little bit more discussion time and see if this could, and we understand Gulf Highway. I mean, it is kind of mixed and stuff, but it's a pretty big deal storing that much fuel right on the side of Gulf Highway, so maybe, would you be willing to let us defer this for thirty days, if that was all right with the jury? That'd be fine.
Would you want to make that in?
I would make that into a motion.
Second.
To defer for thirty days.
I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Trimmie to defer for thirty days. Any discussion? Any objection?
I still have que, we're still...
You still, we're still in discussion? Okay, then.
We still have jurors that have questions.
I'm sorry, we'll hold that motion, and we'll go to you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and I'm sorry, but I didn't understand. Are you representing Pumpelli Oil Company? Do you, are you an employee of theirs?
I'm not a, I worked for Pumpelli for sixteen years, and I still do their work to this day. I'm a contractor.
Okay.
So, I represent Glen Pumpelli and Pumpelli Oil.
So, you're representing them tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can you tell me where the location is? I'm not sure where the fifty-eight-hundred block of Common Street is. Tell, tell me what you...
South of the Cowboys, yesterday's Jimbo's. You're going south, and you have the, basically it's an industrial, um...
Are you on the east side or west side of the road?
I'm on the west side, on the corner of Teckel Road and Common, Gulf Highway.
That's Dennis', that's Dennis', side of the road. Okay, um, wha, your recommendation, Mr. Crane? Did I? So negative.
I like them.
Just kidding. Uh, and, and I believe, you know, he, he made an offer there to, to, for it to be temporary, but can we, I know, once we change that zoning, I don't, yeah, and we normally don't do that. It's normally not temporary, but could we add extra restrictions to, to specifically spell out what it can be used for and nothing else, and then when that ceases, it, it would go back, revert back? Could we do something like that?
Well, there, there is a provision in the ordinance, if you zone, um, property to heavy industrial, that a developer's agreement is required. And so, those are things that you could put in a developer's agreement. Um, you know, there's multiple things you can put in a developer's agreement.
And he did say he would, he would, uh, not against enclosing it. I mean, hey, we could, he could break, break the front and landscape it. It, it might, it might look nice. It might fall into that corridor thing. Of course, that would take a lot more discussion. I think that's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Landry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
We, we only have, I mean, obviously, we can only review what they submit to us, so the only thing...
Right, but if we go with, uh, Mr. Scott's motion there and buy us a little more time, uh, we, we may be able to work it out. Because I can tell you, if you're having problems now, you, you give it a few more months, and when they start working on that bridge, you gonna be, or you're, they're gonna be in big trouble. I can tell them.
That's what they're trying to get it down.
It's about gonna shut them down. And so, they've owned this property for some time?
Thirty-plus years.
Okay. And so, I guess, obviously, that's...
But there used to be a business there. After hurricanes, they got demoed, took them down. Basically, they got a lawn service, pretty, seven acres. They keep it groomed, clean.
Okay. Yeah, I know where it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. We still have discussion, Mr. Gasport. Mr. Andrew Point.
I'll wait for the thirty days.
Okay. All right. We had a motion on the floor by Mr. Scott to defer for thirty days. Did I get a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Landry.
Ms. Trimmie, yes.
Ms. Trimmie, thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Gasport.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight. Take appropriate action on request by James Roy Duplessis and wife to rezone from agriculture to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park at eighty-five eleven Gulf Highway in Ward Three.
Moved up whole.
The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, February the twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain.
Any opposition or any speakers?
Is there any opposition or any speakers in the audience on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Moving on to item number nine. Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to the, to be forwarded to the family of the late Annie Louise Hints Gidry. Mr. White.
Um, there's a whole lot to say about, uh, Coach Anne Gidry. She, uh, she was really an icon to Moss Bluff, um, and to the school. Um, it's, uh, very touching, or, or it's very emotional for me to even speak on her, because there's, there's teachers in life that you, that touches, uh, each kid's soul or their heart, and they, they carry it on. Well, uh, as a teacher for thirty-five years, um, within Cockshoe Parish, um, Coach Anne touched every kid, um, and everybody in my family. Um, we were talking earlier, um, she was teaching when somebody was, uh, somebody was in high school, their kids just went through when she was the principal. So, um, this lady's life was just extraordinary, what she's done with Sam Houston High School and the softball team there, and still, if, if she was here still, she would still be at that softball field with the girls. I mean, it's, she's just, was an extraordinary woman, and it's, uh, it's sad to see such a person like that leave us. Um, I, I pray the family has, uh, guidance with, uh, their loss, and I wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White, for those words. Um, we had a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Landry. Item number ten. Consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded.
Move on to...
Second. To the family of the late Mr. Rex Dansby. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, poor, poor Rex, and I'll tell one quick Rex story. I, I was on the police jury for less than one month, and Rex came down here, and of course, you know, he, he was the labor representative, and, and Mark was here, and I believe evidently, I found out very quickly that he was pretty upset with Mark and, and all of us as well. And, uh, he, he stayed up there and, and kind of commenced to hollering at us, and I, when I got home, I told my wife, my God, what have I got myself into? I said, this guy came down there, and, I mean, he just chewed us out. But, uh, and I told Rex's wife, uh, that other night at, at the funeral home, she just, she laughed. But, uh, Rex really, I mean, after that, I got to know him, and he would stop by my store quite often, and, and, you know, he really, he was a nice guy, and, uh, even though it didn't seem like he was that night, but, but he really turned out to be. And I tell you one thing, he, he fought for his people. I mean, he really did. He, he did his job well, and, and he stood up for, for the people that he was representing, and, you know, hey, uh, I know they missed him, ever since he's been gone, and, and poor thing he suffered. I think he's been in the nursing home for five years. He, he, he's been sick, you know, a long time. So, uh, we, uh, we all know he's in a better place, and, and, and we wish his family well. I know it's gonna be tough, and they're gonna miss him, but, uh, but we're gonna miss him too. I mean, you, you know, we, we really, really will and have over the last few years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Andrew Point.
The thing that I remember about Rex the most was he wanted to be on the Gravity Drainage Board, and I don't know what happened, but he was very unhappy here one night when he found out he was not gonna be appointed at that particular time. I never forgot that, you know, he was pretty heavy, and I'm telling you, he's, like he was on skates, he was gone.
I fixed that later, though. I, I got him on, I put him on that board.
I know you did. I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Point. We had a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Barris. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carry.
Moved up whole.
Second. Uh, item number eleven, Mr. Jones, I have a motion by Vice President Brain, and I have a motion by Mr., second by Mr. Your Barris. For now, Jones.